We ready?
We ready, Mr. President?
All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education for the school district in the town complex. I'd like to start with the roll call vote, please. Try?
Chisholm.
Here.
So, do you hear or talk?
There.
It is so bad.
Here. So, Paul will be a little late. He'll be joining us around the corner. So, we do have quorum. For members of the Board. So, report on public notice, please.
Yes, public notice is repulsed on Wednesday, February 19, 2020. The district office, Marine Drive Union Municipal Building. The agendas are also sent in the mail to Final Act reporter, G107, Quinlan, the Bold, and WFL Radio, also on Wednesday, February 19, 2020.
In case you hadn't noticed, the flag is on the wall. Let us rise for the...
I'd like to pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Everyone? The minutes of the last meeting were distributed to members in their work packet. Does anyone have any additions or corrections to the minutes as they were published? Seeing none, then those minutes will stand for the rest.
At this point of notice, the projections of board established, Lumen's open forum will also part.
So, treasure support.
Yeah.
Oh, you got it?
All right. All right. All right, and blue and treasure. Paul, step back and be quiet. We'll give the treasurers your report. Cash on balance, January 27th to the last quarter, 2021, million, 726,832 dollars and 77 cents. Receipts, we brought in 1,011,867 dollars and 6 cents. Total receipts, 2,738,699 dollars and 83 cents. The district spent 1,612,394 dollars and 66 cents. So, cash balance on hand as of today, 1,126,305 dollars and 17 cents. The motion then is to approve checks, pre-approved checks before the board meeting were 1,27,881 dollars and 52 cents. And then board meeting checks, that will be mailed out tomorrow with the pleasure of the board, 320,471 dollars, 3 cents. So, total amount of being asked to be approved, 1,348,352 dollars and 55 cents. And I pass it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Spado. The expenditures were also distributed to members back in the board members' hand and questions while the expenses that were listed for this month.
I just have one, and I think it's, because I'm a little ignorant, but there's a thousand dollar flat fee for concession cards.
Concession cards.
Cards.
Yes, Oriole Nation buys our script cards, a thousand dollars at a time, and then they go shopping with that to buy our concession.
Okay, I get it. Sorry, thank you.
You're welcome.
There will be some break concessions tomorrow with two games, boys versus keel, and then we have our regional, first off, regional game, the drills versus the mire. And we're not getting any snow, all against the state of the West End.
Any other questions on finances? Now, what's the board's pleasure for the local district? I'll make the motion to pay the bills.
I'll second.
All right. Second page, 1,9348,352 dollars and 5 cents. Both of them?
Alex.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
She said yes.
Well, that's yes.
All right, that is approved. Next on the agenda is the coops report.
I have one with thank you from Janice's family from her mother base.
Okay, that's it?
Yes.
All right. Next on the agenda, student council report.
All right, so for student council, the student council is hosting a teacher appreciation dinner this week during parent-teacher conferences. So, they'll provide a soup, dinner, and then rolls, and then quick scenes for that. And that'll be on Wednesday during their conferences, and that's just a way for us to say thank you to the teachers for all that they do for us. And then the student council is also getting ready for our annual family night event. We provide games and activities for students pre-k through fifth grade and then their families. This is a big community service event for us, and we are meeting in small committees each week leading up to it in order to get everything ready for March 18th. And then we run the family night from 5:30 to 7:30, and then the ice fishing club joins us, and they do like a fishing game. For key club, the key club will be visited by the Juana's members tomorrow at our meeting on the 25th. The key club students continue to meet their 24-hour volunteer requirements and through a variety of opportunities. And one that we have right now or will be coming up is the parent-teacher conferences, babysitting, so that parents can go to the conferences without their kids at FLC. And then for NHS, the sophores and juniors currently who have a 3.5 GPA or higher from the first semester, we're invited to apply for membership to NHS, and then those applications are due March 6th. And those who meet the criteria for membership will be inducted at the NHS banquet on April 19th. That's all.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments? So, now the agenda is citizens input. This is the point at every meeting we have where members of the audience who wish to address the board on any given subject have free reign to do so. I've seen a rush to the front of the room, so I will declare the citizens input portion of the meeting close at 7:09. Next on the agenda, item J, the much anticipated conference.
Yes, and I was just thinking, you know, someday, citizen input, I might just have a complaint against myself. That'd be a good one.
You could do that.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much. So, we're going to start rock and roll and get underway. First, we have our great Trefford Wade group here, so we have Meg and Tiffany and Karen. Before they start, just want to give a big shout out to the team along with Dr. Trefford, Matt Dolan, the district. We are honored and envisioned, greater fatherland, for partner Eden Schneider.
Schneider.
Eden Schneider, I should know that from the Holy Land. Eden Schneider Cooperation Award, Steve was there also. So, and I know he had a 15-minute remarks prepared, which he didn't have out between you, but I do appreciate you having that already. So, that was a great thing for us, and I'll, right now, I'll turn it over to you guys for an update.
Yeah, so just to follow up on that, Steve, sorry we missed you there. I mean, Steve sneaked in the back, and we were looking for you afterwards. But thank you to all of you for making it all possible and everything that we're doing. It was a really great event to celebrate success that we've had so far and dream about where we're going from here and to make some good community contacts. But it would be possible without the support of the district, so we appreciate that very much. This update, the biggest thing that we're focusing on right now as a governance board is our enrollment for the 2021 school year. Yes. So, we just had our lottery, and thanks to Chris for helping us out that day and being a witness to our lottery so that we're under state standards, so that was very helpful, and have selected our five students who will be enrolling in kindergarten for next year. Several of them pending, you know, open enrollment in that discussion. But we have 19 additional students on the waitlist and have had some really good conversations with those families as well. So, we're pretty pleased with those numbers. Wish we could take them all, but, you know, with really only notification on a bare minimum, knowing we had such few seats, we didn't really promote outside of the district, and so to have 19 on our list is quite a bit. Other than that, we're just moving forward with planning for our next gallery walk.
Our next gallery walk and family engagement events.
What's the subject of this one?
Each student will get to choose a passion project that they've worked on this year or that they're starting now, so it'll be one of their passions that they're interested in and however they want to present it. So, it'll be set up around the school, and then whoever comes can check in with each student and hear about what they've been learning.
Like the world tour?
Yeah, yeah, almost like the world tour.
And then on our parent surveys, we recently surveyed parents to try to get a number on who's returning, and so far, the results have been pretty good. Thirty-five out of 40 families have responded, and so we're getting a good idea on how our numbers will shake out that way for next year, too, to hopefully get some of those kids on the waitlist if that possibility arises off the waitlist. And then lastly, just kind of dreaming and scheming about future things, we're generating a kind of a community outreach and facilities committee. So, if you guys know anybody who might be interested in joining in those ventures, we'll be starting those meetings in March.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. If you guys have any questions of Trefford Wade.
So, did I hear you say that 35 of your 40 students are returning?
They've replied at this point. Nobody, everybody's either, we gave them options, you know, definitely returning, likely returning, possibly, or not returning. Everybody's been likely or definitely. I think we had three possibilities and no, no, not returning. So, right now, we're expecting a large percentage of our population to return. Historically, for charter schools, the enrollment the first year is quite mixed. Typically, by this point, most charter schools have lost a few students just because of the change of a charter in general. So, we're really proud that we've retained all of our students up until this point, and it's our goal to keep them throughout the whole process if we can, but we know that we're not the right fit for everybody. So, if any students are looking to either return to their home district or return to their home school within our district, we'll definitely keep those teams posted so we can have a successful transition. But we're pretty pleased right now. We're looking like a high return rate for next year.
Excellent. And we have some meetings with next support from the Spanish charter school network on Thursday, so paperwork's all up to speed. All right.
Thank you, guys.
All right, Tom, next, posting personnel update. The administrative team and I have been working on looking at what our plan looks like next year. We are looking at possibly moving some staff in far as increasing responsibilities, looking at possibly also adding a few staff here and there. We're still working through those things. In March, I'll have a recommendation that will come with a deficit price tag on it of what our budget looks like, and Maria's working through that. So, then after that, as I talk and kind of hit the proverbial, if you're okay with that number going forward, as we try to mitigate that debt as we go through the year, but to supply or have the right staff at the beginning of next year, we'll have that process. But I feel comfortable, I think we're farther ahead now in planning than we've ever been, so I look forward to March to bring some information about maybe changes in responsibilities and maybe some recommendations for additions. Right now, we'll see one with Jenna that's for contract for teaching next year with the right program in a stuff very difficult position to find she's doing outstanding. So, some different changes coming up, but there'll be more information as we start to dial in the numbers. We had a really great live meeting last Friday. We're going to have another one, I believe, Wednesday, and we're going to be able to talk a little bit, I think, in some time to sweep, but we'll get that dialed in, and then I'll come with some recommendations and go from there. Anything to add, Maria or Kim? All right. Next, I want to share briefly in Q12. So, as the district went through, I talked about this last week, last, a while back last year, the district is really, I really want to get a metric to find out, you know, we know we have increased enrollment, we know that we see some of our growth and achievement data going, we know that we've seen it both in our, in our budget, we've seen more money coming in, we've seen an increase in facilities, almost one-third more space than we've ever had. But the idea of finding out what's, what's the pulse out there, what's going on? So, what we did is we invested in Gallup, two different polls. One is the student Gallup poll, which the staff already got back, and we'll be doing a report on that probably in the next few months where they develop different plans. There's 24 questions that the students will get and take, and we do that every year. It'll be between September and October, and then that's compared against students across the world. And on that, we're pretty much average when we look at our engagement numbers with our kids. This is the Q12. So, happiness, measuring happiness is a very difficult thing to do, but you cannot measure aspects of happiness. And I'd say the three aspects of happiness, if I were to take and get three main words would be purpose, it'd be meaning, and then be engaged. In the world of, the corporate world, business world, it's about engagement. How do you have people that want to be where they're at and feel like they're doing the work that they should be doing? So, Gallup came up with 12 questions. I'll show you those. And what we did is we gave it to our staff, 145 out of 190-plus returned it. They were able to dissegregate between buildings, who their administrator was, what role they had, and how long they've been in district. What I'm going to show now is just the overall view. As time goes on, I'll show you some more information in a different venue about different breakdowns and information. But the main goal is to see where we're at overall, and then this will be part of our key performance indicators and something we'll come back to. So, what you're going to see right here is a plan that I made, that I'm utilizing already quite intact to address the district, Q12. So, there's a district one, so you have the students who we're working on, then we have a district, which you're going to see here, this kind of template or this layout, the staff, each one of, so Sam, Carrie, Joe, and Adam, they're working on the ones that were for their buildings. Then they're going to be picking two of the main areas where both growth could happen and working on those. And then Chris, Sam, Carrie, Joe, and Mike also have individuals. So, in their evaluation, which I will share with you, we have the baseline of what they have now, and then we're going to give this poll again in May. So, there, so you're going to see my goals, what we're working on. We'll give the poll in May, and we'll see if those numbers have moved. All right? So, I set this out earlier, and this will end up being, I'll put it on the website, but this right here, you can see the engagement. Now, the colors, red, when you look at this, this is of all the groups in the world, companies that take the Gallup poll. According to Ted Nitske, this is the highest engaged of first-ever poll of a school that he's known as having, okay? It's also the highest actively disengaged. So, we kind of have, you know, so we have both worlds. But once again, they take this test or this quiz, and it's the first time. Now, when they see how it's worked and we work through different questions, they're going to, our staff will be able to hopefully see that we're really addressing these areas. So, if you see, for instance, we'll go down to the best friend. So, 88 percentile, that means in our district, there's, we're in the top 12% of all companies, not just schools, but companies across the world, and people feeling that they have a friend at work. Now, if you see it's at 3.94, okay, that's out of a five scale, so that's still pretty high. So, if you go to the three that we're working on, is I know what's expected at work, we're in the seventh percentile, and then if materials and equipment, we're in the ninth percentile, and then my opinions count, we're in the sixth percentile. But what I know is expected at work, four, it's a four out of five, so it's still not that low, so that means that we're doing okay, but we can do better. So, the goal here, then, if you see that 3.73, that's all of these mean, the mean or average of all of these, okay? So, this is the first data, and it's the best it's ever been, it's the worst it's ever been. So, this is our start, okay? So, what I've done then from this, when I got this, and now the principals, they have one like this that has like Samantha Friedman, there's one that says Bessie Allen, there's one that says zero to five years, or zero to five years of employment, five, or six to 10, there's one, they're disintegrating in those different areas, custodial maintenance, educator support staff. So, and there's some interesting things. Support staff show a lot, almost like three, three times more engagement in the district. Pretty interesting, but this is everything overall. So, what I'm, so what our focus is, is right here. So, this is what the district, so the district, you can see, this is the results that we have, okay? And then you can also see that 37% reported engaged, 44 reported not engaged, 19 actively disengaged. Actively disengaged means they're not happy with what's going on and are actually going against kind of what was, kind of what's expected. Now, once again, once we take this in May, we're going to see what happens. I think there's a lot of different variables, but I'm pretty jacked, and I'm excited to see what that is. So, if you looked at this, these are the three that I picked that I'm working on as a district, which survey managers are most proud of, and you can see the best friends at work, and then also information that Ted shared about how we are comparative, which are you most concerned, well, actively disengaged, of course, and material equipment opinions count. So, what we're going to do then is right here. So, the next step, so what you see here, once again, the administrators are replicating this for their buildings, and they'll be sharing this with you. Probably March, you guys should have it done, and we can get that to them for, they'll be sharing it. And then individually, I'll also be sharing that information with you when I do the evaluations of them in, and in May, early June, where you can see the growth. So, here's what we're working on in our district. Update, so know what's expected, okay? So, what my goal is, is that when they take this in May, and then we're going to take it again next November, and then again in May, what I'm hoping is that number goes up. So, what are we working on? Update all compensation processes. The belief is, is that when people know what they're making, how the races are going to happen, what that is, that will then also correlate to have the feeling that they know what's expected and feeling, I think, also that their opinions count, too. Update all job descriptions, that will be done by July 1st, we're working on that. Now, we have, we have, they're all done for the wolf's fire. We just want to make sure that they're up there, and people realize what they are and that they're there. Key performance indicators, that probably about 80% done. I'm going to have a draft of the board in 2020, about a year ago, we worked on that, too, when we were at that curtain and incubator at Hidou. And then, so that's what I'm going to be working on, I know what's expected. Then my opinions count. So, I'm working with administration and using the Q12 resorts in their different areas. So, I was working with them to plan with the educator effectiveness, this system. So, my thought processes is if each one of these administrators raise their scores in their buildings for people believing that what they, their opinions matter, that's going to have a huge impact overall. So, one person at a time, and that's something I would expect the administrators to work with in their building, and I'm working with them, too. The second is, is holding meetings, I already did some at Friendship, and one at Bessie Allen, I'll be doing some more the 25th, which is, oh, what is that, that's this week?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Oh, I'll be here at 7:00 tomorrow.
Yep.
All right, so, yep, are you? Yep. So, what I've learned already is, one is that, one staff member said, you know, if we give an email, and you just, it doesn't matter if you answer it right or wrong, but let us know that you got it. So, I think there's sometimes there's some concern then with something, I thought, okay, that's an easier one, you know? Then another thing that came up huge is Bessie Allen. Bessie Allen has some, some needs, not, there's some structural, but a lot of cosmetic needs. We're going to really focus on Bessie Allen this summer, get some painting, get some lines, get some things fixed, so that we can kind of move that forward. I think that if there's some feeling with all the different referendum stuff going on, there was stuff that Bessie had, a lot of those HVAC plumbing stuff, that didn't really have impact. So, there's things I think that can really have a big impact. We also talked about employment and wages, and it wasn't so much about that, I mean, everybody wants to make more, but some different ideas about how we could reward people who've been here longer. And so, this is pretty interesting stuff, so I was excited about that, and I'm excited to listen tomorrow to Horst and Bessie Allen at 7:00 and 3:30, bring that stuff in, start implementing some of those things, and rock and roll. So, that's, that's how that's being used, and then what I will do is when we do the survey again in May, I will bring the results and then compare, and I'll utilize this as part of my information as you evaluate me, too. So, we're going to have a continual process of looking at engagement down with our students. We have been up there with our students and our staff. Steve?
Just going back to the list of the Q12 question, with those, is that, just by understanding, the 16 on the first one, that's the 16th percentile out of 100?
Yes.
Worldwide, just this?
Not just this.
I agree.
No, that's with Disney, that's with Nationwide Insurance, that's with Caesar Six, that's with them. Okay, so, I mean, there's a percentile, and then there's also numbers. I think a lot of companies that use Q12 are pretty engaged in the first place, otherwise they wouldn't care about the major in some senses. But what I'm really excited about, like, this is the best and worst we've ever seen. I'm excited about the next time, see what happens. I know there's one school district that's using this actually now, so I know that, and I've been talking to their administrator, I kind of know why, but there's, we want to make sure that we're focused on this and this after this, this is our base on growing and growing, and now we have specific things like recognition, I think, I think I was talking with Carrie Joe, and then one of the things in the building is recognition. Now, there might be recognition, but how do we make sure people know that, how is it individualized? How do we recognize recognition? So, if people feel that way, we can increase that, that should increase engagement.
One of the things Paula and I both talked about in the meeting, when you said you were going to do this, is we really wanted to see the comments, but you indicated here that we can't because the indicators were removed, so we don't.
Well, we should see, I could get, but the reason to see what happened was, is when they did the comments, I can't dissegregate them between like this administrator or that. So, there's some in there that say Aaron X or Mike X, but the majority of them, I don't know where they came from. So, to have that information, so when I ask questions next time, I thought I would be able to dissegregate between everybody that's at Horst and, or everybody that has Samantha as a supervisor. I couldn't do that. So, I mean, that's, I don't know how fair that is to just bring the information that I'm sure we can identify the negative ones, but we can't identify the positive ones. What I have done is I've shared trends with administrators about some of their concerns and go to end that from what I saw. And then the next time when we do that, I'll have some old dynamic questions, but I'm going to say, please state who you're, what building you're at, what your role is, and who's your administrator, so that we have that, that information, then, then I got, then it's handy. I know where it's coming.
So, then how did you use those comments? Or didn't you?
I really, what I did is, the ones that had names on them, I could use them with that trend, and then some I, some I could figure out that could pull from, to know where they are and share that information, that's what I made it. I made some word clouds.
And you were able to share that information with us?
Sure. That I don't want to share, I want to share that at a different time if you don't. Because I mean, if I don't have a name to, and I think when we look at that information, I want to make sure that we utilize that in an appropriate way and it's used in the right time, so.
Absolutely.
Definitely. All right. Yeah, so I'm pretty excited about that, and this is just the start. And Trefford, you guys are like all green, by the way. I'll get you yours, I mean, everybody liked where they were. I think you guys all picked to be there.
It's a good place to be.
Yeah, I think it was you, Meg, the kind of reality, I'll give you yours, here's a Trefford Wade all green, it's like we love it, everything's good. You wouldn't believe this.
It was before the school opened? No.
Yeah. Well, it was before Friday, although the link, the articulation of some of this, I'm just so proud of them. They do such a good job. It's fun stuff.
It's a great speech, Dave.
Yes, yes, yes. All right, so, the only other things I have is, we're right now with nurses, but we've had some things with each one of the individual families, so we have Bridger right now, Julie's going to be here, Nurse Emily's kind of around. We're working on killing, making sure we always have the support, but Bridger will give an update on nursing, which is going really well without, you know, life happening in the old ministry, that's all over, but, so that'll be coming up. Policies, King Richard was going out of the country, so I haven't gotten the next update on that, but we will be working on that probably next month. Retirement party will be Monday, June 1st, 2020. Any information from administrators that you guys want to share, or questions that you guys have of administrators?
If I can just share, so we, tonight with Carrie Nitz and Drug Free Communities, Alex, I shouldn't tell you her name right now, I don't know if I'm going to. I had her first night, and he was able to stay for a big dating portion with me. You know, whenever you put these things on, you want 150, 200 people, and I believe we have 15. It's a start. It's a really cool event, I took a couple pictures, so I'll forward to you. Basically, they set up a bedroom and a lot of, you know, crazy hidden things just to make parents aware, and then we have speakers who talk from everything, from a couple of slides on, you know, what is out there right now, and just kind of sending you some information about alcohol, drugs, baby naked. A parent spoke on a story with her daughter, so it's a very good night, so we'd like to hold it again and have more people, but it's, you guys have some.
So, that's where I just came from, and I was a little disappointed with the turnout as well, but it was a great personal story that we shared and very good information. So, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, that's all I have for the Chisholm and the last year's board.
Okay, next item is Kate, items of new business.
Uh, before we go back, yes, I'm.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Number one, discuss, consider, the early graduation policy.
Very, very excited that we have Alaska here. Very, very excited that we have Alaska here, who, uh, wrote the, her essay, shared with myself and, uh, Ms. McGill Freeman, and really, and I'm excited to hear junior, so this is something that if it passes, it could really positively impact. So we have Alaska on, I'll turn this over to Samantha, and then, um, if you wanna just talk a little bit about the policy. Samantha brought this up, there are no changes that I know from when we presented them.
It changed the, the word, I forgot, I'm not just, what it is, but it changed the policy.
Alright, so that was a change, um, and then otherwise, if you wanna just bring this up, let me introduce Alaska.
So we, we shared a little bit before, and I just asked Alaska and Grandma to be here tonight, if they wouldn't mind, um, because really, truly, uh, like we mentioned, um, last time, the early graduation policy is not something that's gonna impact a hundred students, it's not gonna impact twenty-five students, but there are definitely individual cases, and, uh, after remaining last time, uh, I shared, really don't want to put that camera on you. She brings the mic down. And so I shared with Alaska, and I said, I really would love for you to, to come, and, um, she was gracious enough to say, you know what, I, I will make it work, I will, I'm, I'm nervous and scared, um, and I'm like, you'll be fine, it's your personal story, you are a perfect fit for, for any reason to bring this policy forward. Um, so I'm gonna ask Alaska, I asked her permission to share her, um, article with you guys, and I did so, and I asked her if she would just come tonight to maybe share a little bit more information of how this would impact her next year, because she will be a senior. So she knows I'm putting her on the spot to maybe share a little bit tonight.
Yep.
Ready?
Yeah, if you want, you can stand right over there. Yeah, right over there, you got it, it's cool, I'll stand by you, you'll be fine.
So Alaska, if we were, if the board was to ask you tonight, um, what would an early graduation mean to you, and why should they enact this policy? What would you share?
Okay, um, I think, because, um, I...
You got it.
I, um, I'm a youth apprenticeship program, and I'm a senior, and, um, I... And I am planning on going to Ryan Park High School College, um, after my senior year, and it is not, um... It is not, um...
You've even, you're a hard worker, and what would help you to graduate early? Are you working really hard, do you have high goals in your life, what do you wanna achieve? Are you the student that comes and says, hey, do you want a modesty course that I can take, so that this will help me in my future?
And it is, um, not... I am not...
So would you say Alaska, maybe I can get from, so would you say, so you enjoy school, but you're, you're, like, the school experience is different for you than maybe some other students? And so it's not that you don't like school, it's just that your next step, if you can get to it sooner in your life, is something that you'd very much appreciate, and there's probably other students like you that meet the board criteria, and, you know, it's not about the sports, it's not about those other things, but you just wanna move on with your life, and you feel that your high school's been fulfilled, and you wanna have that opportunity.
You just say what you think. Your, your essay, what, what you said in that was awesome, so if you remember what you said, just say that, it was really good, it was really good.
Better write it in. But I think that I'm definitely getting financial aid, and I know there are scholarships, but there were some things that I want to do, and I think that if I were able to graduate early and get all workplace course material out of the way, I could focus on work, and then when I start college, I won't have to worry about the money side of that, and I could focus on my coursework, and being able to get through my classes and become a nurse.
So that's a sure to do. You're a CNA already? There you go.
Grandma, can I put you on the spot? Do you wanna add anything, because Grandma's a huge supporter of Ms. Alaska.
Yes, she has worked very hard, uh, she joined the youth apprenticeship program, so last summer, she went to school to become a CNA, and she's been working at Harbor Haven, and she loves it, so, she wants to pursue nursing.
Questions you guys have, we're gonna ask her?
Well, pretty sure, sure, go right there. So would you take part in early graduation of this all project, or?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and then your plan would be to go continue with the studies at Wright Park, or to work a little bit in between, or both?
Um, both, and, yeah, I, um, keep working at Harbor Haven.
Yeah.
And then as I worked, or as I got into school to be a nurse, you can get the LPM degree before you become an RN, so I've worked as that then, and then I wanted to go after that.
And keep working at the same time, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
And would you come back and walk in graduation?
I guess it's more not necessarily for Alaska, but for Sam or Erin, who I think helped develop the, the policy. And I, I think I mentioned last month, when we talked about it, that kind of a traditionalness, and it was a little concerned at first, but it was a very good explanation that it can work for a certain type of student or whatever, and so I, I'm okay with that. But one of the things in the list of requirements and rules and stuff that I, that I do have a little bit of a problem with, kind of a pragmatic person, that doesn't seem logical to me, and that's under section two, number B. But, uh, the early graduates will be eligible to participate in school dances, senior class trip, and all senior-related graduation activities, potentially the banquet and the trip and stuff, but maybe that's a little illogical, because if a student feels like they wanna end their high school career after seventh semester, December, or January 20th, for example, is that they, to me, I think you are saying, I'm done here, I don't wanna be part of this school anymore. Um, I'm going off, I'm gonna be a student at Wright Park, in your case, or wherever, depending on who it is. And I, I guess in my mind, that kind of forfeit that, right, I guess, to do the rest of the graduation stuff.
Well, to answer that question, I'll just, and then you guys chime in. The idea, like, in Alaska's case, it's not that I'm done with school, I don't like it here, it's just that I now have the opportunity to work and go to school, instead of going to school and going to school. So, it's the idea that, I mean, the option is that whoever would graduate would be in good standing, no behavioral problems, if they so choose, they were going to school for, you know, you take kindergarten, going to school for twelve and a half years, with their friends, with all these, with, you know, with their friends, the teachers, all that. The senior graduate, or the senior banquet is a celebration, not just of that last semester, but of the entire year. The senior class trip is a celebration of all those different years, not just that last year. And then the graduation, it'd be, it wouldn't be the same thing to have a graduation just for one student during that time, when the whole ceremony is. So, I would see that the type of student, I don't know how many would take advantage of those, but that those, those are hallmark, you know, capstones of a whole career, not just of the senior career. So that's the way that I see it, a little bit different. Um, they are, WIA, they are forfeiting their right to play any athletics, um, they wouldn't be competing or singing in chorus or band or anything like that, so any of the school-related things are no longer doing, those are just some capstone celebrations that are celebrating their entire career, not just that one time.
And I think for bottom, for bottom line too, this policy is not about taking away for students, it's about providing, you know, the most opportunities for students that earn their diploma, and, you know, the whole square peg, round, different situations. Um, Alaska's situation may be very different than someone else, who would, again, come and, hey, here's my plan, and here's what I'm gonna do, and then, you know, those beginning steps meet, but agree, there's things that I can't, um, change, WIA has the rules, and obviously it wouldn't be different participating in Coral Cabaret or that, but I'm not looking to punish anyone because they wanna graduate early. So, the, um, the senior banquet, which is, you know, we struggle to get kids to attend that to begin with, um, you know, we want anyone who wishes to be a part of that, to be part of that.
Other thoughts or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
It's over. I've been, for anybody who's interested more, that policy's right in the board package, awesome.
President? I just asked on the side, Gabby, what she thought, being a senior this year, and if she's agreed to give me her thoughts, I guess, for all of us.
Yeah, um, I think it's a really good opportunity, especially because, like, our district, we adapt to different students and what they need, and like, we talked about the last time, what the early release and how, like, oh, well, we're reliable for anything, but ultimately, it's, what can we do to help the students, and like, what opportunities they could have? So like, in the mornings now, I have time to tutor before school, because I have study hall, and in her case, like, she's not, like, oh, I'm just gonna be done with school, and then I'm gonna hang out and do nothing, like, she has a plan, and I know, like, the CNA stuff, like, I'm doing that right now, and it's a lot of work, so for her to go through that already and have that all done, and be working right now, and still going to school, it just shows that we, like, we understand that you're working really hard, and that you deserve a chance, like, if you have everything you need here, why would we hold you back here, why, why don't we let you go at semester, and you can already start moving on? Because she has a goal, and she knows what she wants to do, it's not like, oh, I'm gonna graduate early and now for the next semester, while my classmates are still going to school, I'm just gonna hang out at home. She wants to go and do something, so I think, you know, although some people might be different, I think, in Alaska's case, like, she knows what she wants to do, and she has a plan, and just even coming here and saying all this, like, obviously that was not easy for her, so it's something that she's passionate about, she knows what she wants to do, so I think, like, yeah, our school district is all about, you know, opportunities for students, and letting them, you know, try new things, and not saying, nope, we want you to stay here, no, you can't, if you do this, then you're done here. So I think, like, allowing her, if she wants to part her senior banquet, would be important, because it's not that she's saying, like, I don't like this school, I'm done with this. She is asking you to give her the opportunity to, you know, spread her wings and do what's next in her life. So I think it's a good opportunity.
And I'll even, picking back off that, a student who doesn't wanna be here and can graduate that semester, gives a benefit to the school and the community, but it also, because, you know, Alaska didn't want somebody to do is that they can graduate that semester. I have a family member that graduated from Final Act that semester, they were done with school. And having that person not in that environment isn't a negative, and it helps them out too, so. Now, either way, but in the Alaska's case, I think there's, you know, I, that's, thank you for, what you're saying, the district does, that's, that's pretty cool, the things that the board has set up from past board members, also the, the adapter.
Thank you for your insight. Uh, so you're looking to board action on this then?
Yes.
So, uh, any other questions or comments about the graduation policy that's been presented? See, none, entertaining a motion, and then the, the doc, the early graduation policy.
I'll make a motion.
I moved in secondly, third questions? See none, roll call, roll please.
Steph, yes. Kildarski, yes. Hack?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. The early graduation policy.
Now, you guys should probably expect an application that you're gonna have to approve for somebody to graduate next January. When does that happen, Sam? When do those happen?
Uh, before December.
Alright, so probably November, before things happen, you should, uh, expect, uh, an application for early graduation from somebody in this room. Yes.
Alright, very good.
Alright, if you guys wanna cruise.
Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job. Thank you for coming.
And just, full disclosure, that was, I mean, Samantha and I have talked about that on and off in the past decade. But that just came with her writing that thing, it really kinda spurred things into kind of, so it's, it's pretty cool to see activism in somebody to, who maybe doesn't, that people might not see has so much of presence, really have an urge to say something and make a change. If it makes sense, hey, we brought that information, come to listen, so I also wanna thank Samantha and her team for also bracing, so, thanks.
Alright, next on the agenda, item two, discuss and consider endorsing student trip to Europe.
Alright, we do have Lee Store here, I don't think we're gonna maybe get to this right now, we could probably get to it in case we're gonna do it, but Lee, if you would wanna come up and address, Lee has done a great job with our, our, uh, our trip out east of the other year, averaging probably about forty-plus people a year, parents and kids from, that are either going into ninth grade or going into the tenth grade, uh, so it's our tenth, our eighth and ninth graders, um, and does a great job, his wife, Robin, works, and serves out of Wopan, and also they have friends in, in Foddlack, friends of Cole colleagues, and looking at any opportunity they can, in order to get experience for kids that aren't mandatory, but are opportunities, so I'll turn it over to Lee, looking, doesn't know exactly when, but he'll tell you a little bit about what this European trip would be like, and go from there.
Well, first of all, good evening, um, we had the opportunity, I got an email from, uh, English teacher at Foddlack High School, who is also, also works in the North Park School District, asking if we might be interested in joining up with them for a trip that Foddy High is putting together to Europe. So I kinda had an informational meeting for families, uh, first, huge turnout, like, whoa, okay. But when it came down to it, now asking the kids to write, they had written an essay about, kinda like, how serious were they, turned their information, and I sent, I mean, at least twelve people to, um, sign, twelve people to show that they had interest, and I did not have that. Except I just got two text messages from two parents this evening, because I told them tonight with the deadline. So, um, well, with that, understood, I'm just, so, I mean, as Lee's getting this, um, this page on the internet on, uh, on the screen, what, what we'd be asking the board is, is all of this goes to explore. So as far as liability, all those different things, uh, money collection, all that, it all goes to explore, and the district touches, I don't need that money. What it is, is the board saying, hey, if there's an opportunity and people would like to do this, if it's one, if it's twenty, the board is aware of it, would maybe let you know when the dates are and stuff, but as far as liabilities and things go, this, they're, they're negligible, it's just more of an information, and we've gone, just as we had heard earlier with Alaska, the whole idea is, if four people can afford and wanna do this out of a hundred, then that's at least four people that could get those experiences, so, um, that's kind of what the, what the idea is, is to share this with you, and even if we don't have it going, if you guys can say, yeah, if that happens sometime, we can do this, yeah, we support that, whatever that would be. So that's kind of what we're looking for, just to give you the background, there is zero liability on the district, it all goes to explore. Uh, the reason we have the board through is because Lee uses some of the school time and also the school place setting in order to have meetings, so. I can get, um, as you said, off, there's an informational packet for school boards about all the different insurance and all the different protocols, and I will get that for him. Uh, so I didn't quite have the response back, I was looking forward to this tour, but the people who've been texting me or emailing really want to do something. So I was hoping to get permission to, that wanted to send students and families and survey, I really truly think it was the price. So if I started playing with the price, or maybe I'm wrong, maybe it was the locations, and they just really weren't so interested in these locations that Foddlack is going to. So I kinda wanted to email, I had fifty-two students and about ten parents initially contacted me, saying they were interested. So I wanna re-survey them and find out which of the dates just really wasn't clicking, and maybe long-term, I don't even know if this is a possibility, like, uh, during spring break, that's logical, and during spring break, gives the cost down by six hundred plus dollars, if I changed nothing. Or maybe some work that you're seeing is that I put together with this. So just kinda looking for your approval that, um, I've been working with Explorers since 2006, and now Foddlack School District, both Foddy High, Tyson, Woodward, but all work with this company, as well as Wopan School Districts. So within Foddlack, I only know three different school districts who work with this company.
I think you're right on the, I mean, the price is a lot, it's also really jam-packed, I'd be exhausted if I wanted to.
There's an app to jam-pack up the price, when I broke down with the parents, I just kinda showed them, if I took, I purchased airline ticket, and then I got my train ticket, and I got my train ticket, and I got my hotels, and I got my meals, when you break it down by price, actually, it's about the same as if I started using hotels.com, and I was walking through Expedia, and like, flying. and I was walking through Expedia, and like flat alone was sixteen hundred dollars for the summer. And then my hotels, the train ticket, the Eurostar from London to Paris. But I think I could do a little work my own, like, I appreciate the Fond du Lac school districts to join, but I kind of had to do what they put together. And each of the East Coast trips, I put together. So there's some things I feel like I could kind of work, do, change to bring down the cost, maybe take this out, add this in. So I guess what I'm looking for is approval that if I can kind of work with them, send out the students, and I can kind of find out from them a little more about what might be interesting then.
So what are you allowed to do working with them? Are you allowed to book your own travel accommodation?
If I, right now, this is like consolidated tour, so I have to do what another school wants to do. But I do the East Coast, I build my own.
Okay.
And so I do, I choose these activities we're gonna do, this is the order we're gonna do it in, they kind of shoot hotels for me. But I can start saying, I want this restaurant where we're here, would you please do this? I wanna, you know, once I'm on tour, since I create my East Coast, I say at one o'clock, here's where we're going, at three o'clock, here's where we're going. Sometimes they tell me, uh, Lee, traffic, uh, no, that does not work. You didn't include all the links in the title. Yeah, you're right, books. But when I create my own, I literally say, these are the things I want to do on this day. How much would that cost? If I take that out, how much does that bring it down versus using one of the pre-created tools? So this gives me an idea, like, who's their offerings. If I make my own, I can go and customize it. The downside to that is I can need all twenty-four travelers to make it happen. But by joining another school district, I just need about twelve to make it happen.
But really, I think it's a perfect next step is to just find out where the gap is. And the initial interest to just minimal, you know, once the program is rolled out. You know, that's the only way you can make the decision is to have the data and find out what it is that's needing to happen.
Because I've been really truly one of the students, so like the last tour I did with my wife, the Wopan School District, we had forty travelers. It was a large high school group to take through the street from London, but we had one. And I felt like we were able to teach and show the kids from doing the actual Shakespeare study course at the Globe Theater, to then going off to Stratford and actually doing after the Shakespeare study, then went and did the Shakespeare live. So those are the things I feel like I can kind of make and create.
I saw the plan on the price literally a half hour after I booked a trip to London, and was shocked. In September, we got round-trip tickets, direct flights for three hundred and thirty dollars, and I know that's crazy cheap and pretty rare to come across that. But I think, I think for a lot of families, they probably find it just sticker shock. Yeah. With the price, I think anyone would jump at a chance, I would jump at a chance to go this route, it's awesome.
Did you go around here and just eat your way through?
I did.
Just still there's a tour if you want?
Yeah. That's why I look like this.
Alright, so we're just looking for if, if you want, so we would give you heads up if things are gonna happen and all that, but this, what this, this is more of the thing that says, hey, Lee, yep, we approved you to go down this route, and check it out, get some work you can put together, cool. If not, and all that, you can utilize in our Fond du Lac, keep part of the group if you can figure it out.
And then come back to you guys once I finally find out if there's, it seemed like there's interest, but I guess I didn't quite find the right thing that they're interested in.
I mean, I'm a big fan of experiential learning and, you know, but I wondered, are, are any of the other schools doing any type of fundraising? To me, it becomes an issue of the haves and the have-nots. And, you know, that's really, you know, unfortunate. So is there anything that, that could, that is being done successfully in other school districts that would bring the price down?
Other school districts do have fundraisers. One of the rules when I first initially created, I guess it's something that you visited, one of the rules when I first initially created our first East Coast trip is that I could not do fundraising. Because I was trying not to compete or take away from students in the band, field trip to Florida. So I've been always kind of stayed away from spring break, or not trying to overlap with the different, you know, basketball to baseball fundraisers. But after doing some investigating, I was able to pick this in somewhere over spring break, or asking the things, the price, like going that off-season, it's just a huge difference versus leaving in June when the airline tickets were quite low.
We have script, one of the conversations with orientation really tried to get away from, you know, selling candy bars, wrapping paper, stuff like that. So, yeah, that's the band, that's how I know some students paid through, they might sell those books. So that would be a question that we'd have to work at if we want to do individual fundraising for individual people, what's that look like? We just, we, that's one thing that orientation's inception's kind of, that'll get us, go away from that. There's still script, but that's something a plan, and then we let them order to utilize that.
I think it's, I have no problem at all with you continuing to explore it. I just, I think at the end, of course, just because it's a school-based thing, that board should make the final approval of it. Because the school district's name is attached to it.
Right.
Otherwise, I'd say do whatever you can to make it work.
You do want to not just hold, and then when it comes to fruition, just say, hey, we got it, we can do it, and then you go back. And do that. Then you get a cart, fly, and go gamble.
No, make this a great idea, give kids the opportunity to see parts of the world here. Alright, next on the agenda is, I remember four. Item three, discuss and consider adding jazz band as an extra duty position.
But, so this is a process that Mike Fedison, our band, our middle school band teacher, and fifth grade band teacher went through. And it's in the educator guide, and it looks at, you know, what has happened in the past, and, you know, what the expectations are for the kids to do it. And what the compensation could be in them letters, it's a whole thing laid out, Mike did a great job. I did have, currently, up there, I had point two seven four. I'd like to make it adjusted to that and make it two point eight six percent, which would be one thousand eighty-six eighty. I think that would be more in line with some of the other extra duty contracts about the time that it would take. So this would just be that Mike went through the, we did the same thing with powerlifting, we did the same thing with fishing club, all those things go through, they have to be in existence. Jazz band used to be during the day, now Mike does it before school. So he leaves early on days and gets a rock and a roll, and so. So I'm, I'm very, I, I love the process he went through, he did all the things right, he is putting extra time. And as long as it maintains me before or outside of his normal working time and is his extra duty, I think that that could be good. So it would be, the only change would be is instead of having that two point seven four base wage, it'd be two point eight six, which would be one thousand eighty-six dollars and eighty cents right now, since base wage is thirty-eight thousand, which, I talked to Maria, we'll probably bump that up to thirty-eight five, sort of multiplier of the options a little bit, be a little increase next year.
Any further questions on this issue or?
My only question is why, why does it necessarily be outside of school then?
Um, during the day, he's got a lot of bands and lessons. And this way, it's easier to get all the kids together at one time. Otherwise, during the day, trying to figure that out with not having an effective impact on his other groups. Because having a band last hour, it's harder to get banned in the other hour, and if you have jazz band opposite times, and you have a lot of time with that band. And there's still some sixth grade and seventh, eighth grade band. So this allows the kids to be part of all the bands and jazz band, and don't have an inter, negative impact on other opportunities at school.
So it's not a scheduled class?
Correct. Nope. It's just been something, if you're in band, they just practice jazz band sometimes, it's not regular. And then they might do some stuff in practice. So this is just made it more formal and before school, so they have the.
Yeah, I can remember when I was in middle school, jazz band, I was during school, I know it wasn't during band, but I don't remember how we did it, but, yeah.
Now, Mr. Reese always did it during the school day at some time, so, but this is just more formalized outside. Did I miss anything?
Um, yeah, I know, well, Mr. Gonzalez isn't here tonight with the schedule, but I know there were schedule changes last year. And Mike, yeah, he's got the sixth grade band, the seventh and eighth grade bands, lessons, he goes over here to, over here to FLC during the day. Schedule-wise, I mean, at work, that's how he had to do it to make sure that all the kids had the opportunity to do this.
It's nice that if somebody knows really in-depth what's going on with the Fedison man.
I mean, he's over here, so he comes over, it's, I think it's like seven to seven forty-five on Mondays and Thursdays, he does it, over at Bams.
So currently, right now, he's not compensated, that's part of the whole process next year.
How many students are in?
Um, I'm not sure, twelve.
Yeah, I was gonna say, he probably has it all in that report there.
Seven, seven fifty, storm, goals, number of students involves sixteen students.
More than me. So what's the board's pleasure on the extra duty? Do you want to see a motion to accept the EXP contract, please, Leo? Do you want to make a motion?
I'll second.
So moving secondly, any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Pollack?
Yes.
Well, that would be, yes, Hock?
Yes.
Steph Parker, yes. Drew?
Yes. And then number four, discuss and consider the contract.
Could I also, then, I'm sorry, that I also would, I'll have him for extra duty, that was, I'm just putting my name on. So we now have that position, and then we'll approve him to be the jazz band. We'll do that with the actual, we'll just let Adam, let's come on.
Like, it doesn't take effect until next year?
Correct.
Alright. Number four was discuss and consider contract for twenty twenty and twenty-one school year for Jenna Wesco.
Yes, and so Jenna, I'll, Chris, I'll turn it over to you really quick, you want to talk a little bit about Jenna?
Yeah. So we hired Jenna as an instructional aide in the alternative presentation or behavioral differences program at FLC. She has a degree in human services leadership and a minor in criminal justice. And she was in the midst of pursuing a counseling, a master's in counseling and clinical mental health. She just fell in love with, with the school district and working with kids, and she said, I, she came to me and said, I really would like to be a teacher, a special education teacher. She worked as a youth care specialist, she has experience as a family development specialist as well. She's phenomenal, she's a self-starter. And if she, one of her kids is absent, she'll jump in and help another teacher. She's built really good relationships with the teachers and the kids, makes connections, so I highly recommend her that, that we pursue, pursue supporting her with the right program.
So then as far as hiring, getting an emergency license, they're difficult to find, we definitely justify that. And then Adam, I'll deal with, if you've navigated that before, so help us with that. But the thing with Jenna then also that, that I'm really excited about, so the Rite program is about seven, eight thousand dollars. Jose Chavez, who wasn't EL certified, he was a secondary or K-12 Spanish language educator, he came here and then went through the Rite program to get his EL certification, other difficult one. So what I offered Jenna is the same thing that I had offered Jose, and that's a board, once, once she completes half of what she paid for that, she could get reimbursed for doing that as long as she stayed with the district for a certain amount of time. And that's only because it's a win-win for everybody. One other thing too is there's an opportunity, a thousand dollar grant from CSGT, thought said that cost to, I gathered that information, and she's applying for that too.
So what did we?
Her contract, so she'd get a teacher contract.
A teacher contract?
Yep.
This was a vacant position that we weren't able to fill, so we have had kind of hodgepodgeing. Judy McHugh, our program support teacher, has filled in that space, and we had Jenna come in to help. We have students with significant behavioral disabilities, and they need special people to work with them. And these people are trying to find a way to support, they're rare, they want to work with these kids and help them. She has a huge heart, and she just, again, fell out of the sky, so we're very fortunate to have her.
And the reason that I'm recommending her, I'm asking to offer a contract now, is number one, that she knows a dedication after her, as she starts to dedicate and apply to the Rite program, which application starts in April, we don't issue contracts until May, and she needs any other contract to be in the Rite program. So that's the reason that I'm, I'm asking now, instead of just having her part of the bank. So she would still be an instructional aide the rest of this year, there's not, no change there, just get beginning of next year. School year, so starting July one and then into the year.
Alright, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion then, that we approve the contract for Jenna Wesco.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Alright, moving secondly, roll call, please.
Steph Parker, yes. Hock?
Yes.
Pollack?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Kildofsky, yes.
Motion passes, seen and listened. Number five, discuss and consider educator retirement.
Alright, and this is five and seven, I apologize, I was, I had the agenda done last Wednesday, came back and did my board report on Friday, and the agenda was already posted, so I have this listed as five and seven. But Carol's that important, that she should have two different lines for the board to accept her resignation. So as, so the one I'll pass it right here, this is a letter from Carol McCarthy, who served many years in our district. So she is, she's asking, she goes, boy, what if, what if they don't approve?
She asked again this morning at the staff meeting, she's very nervous.
See, they don't, if the teacher comes or they realize, like, you're getting it approved, it's nervous.
No, I, I did, I did say that I might slip some money to keep them.
So, but Carol's been great, she's our husband, I think Tim retired us a few years ago, and really excited for her to be able to move on. She said she'd drive the bus to first professional development opportunities, so.
The band.
Yeah, the band, yeah. Oh, bless the make passion.
Yeah, I was gonna make sure she doesn't need a CD.
So that's our only contract to retirement.
But can you tell it was like tied?
Should I text her right now?
Or just tell, just tell her it was flat out no, and just see what she says.
Sure, I'll have fun with her.
And then, although this isn't, although the board doesn't officially recognize in a vote retirements of support staff, I also want to pass this, Mary Schultz is going to be hanging it up, and she let us know, so, in her last, June thirtieth, I think, right? Yep, so, just like, you know, so you're only voting on that, but I thought, you know, when we had, I also want you guys to know about Mary, know that she has aspirations to continue to be part of the district. If you guys are ever looking to step down from the board, I know she wants to run at some point in time, she had said, pretty interesting about you. Yep, she's got a bunch, her sister's already got a lot of Dublin Lee stuff planned.
Alright, so then, hopefully you can take this board action is to consider the retirement of Carol. Alright, been moving secondly to accept the resignation or the retirement of Carol. And we'll add, congrats.
Hock?
Yes.
Kildofsky, yes. Steph Parker, yes. Pollack?
Yes.
Chisholm, yes.
Next on the agenda is item six, discuss and consider coaching contracts.
Alright, coaching extra duty, this is what we have. I don't, I don't think I have any extras, Brian was on, but then he had resigned and now he's back. There might be some on here that were here last year, but regardless, were covered then. Also, I had Mike Fedison on this list for jazz band for two thousand twenty, twenty-one. But this will be in the springs here, Drew's our new head coach, a lot of energy, a lot of excitement there, Jose, that not coach, track, it's head coach soccer, excuse me. Dalton Frich, one of our graduates, interviewed, he's gonna be helping out with track, so that's pretty exciting, he jacked up when I saw him on Quick Trip last night. Jordan, our alumni coming back to be assistant softball coach with her dad. Royal Matt is JV softball. And then Rick Thompson, softball pitching coach. And just a side note, you're probably gonna hear some things. We're gonna be doing a lot of upgrading with the baseball facility this spring. We were, we meant to get onto it in October, September to do seating and stuff. Mother Nature didn't allow that to happen. So we probably will not have any home baseball games as we get this constructed and ready. So it's all set for the summer of 2021. So just an FYI, been in contact with Matt, been in contact with coach, totally understand, ready for it, so just give you an update on that.
Where would we play those games?
Probably way at places where.
Yeah, probably all of them. Religion park isn't big enough.
How old's your softball?
Old.
All right, so we'll entertain a motion to approve the contested coaching contract. Motion.
I'll second.
All right, move to second to approve the coaching contracts. Roll call, please.
Hack.
Yes.
Alec.
Yes.
Chizan.
Yes.
Babzki, yes. Stephacker.
I'm gonna abstain.
Understandable. All right, motion still carries.
That's good to see, Jack, you need some, there's one, that's just.
We handled the resignation of educators.
Yes.
So number eight, discuss and consider light, meaning dario de light, energy saving $2 million.
For 20 years.
Wow.
All right, so I'm gonna turn this over to our, our maintenance expert, Dabeen Mann. Dave, if you would, Dave, Dave came upon this opportunity that can not only improve the environments for learning and athletics, but also save us some good money.
We walked around, me and a salesman, I may call him, guy that knows a lot more about lighting than I do, from Titan LED. Looked at the high school, Ivory Baldwin High School and Bessie Allen, changing it out. Shot some numbers across then what we would be saving per month. And I said, let's do some numbers on what you would charge us for leasing it for five years and it's turned over to us. The numbers are pretty close. I believe we'll be saving somewhere about $1,500 a month after the, after the payment. So after five years, we'd be owning it and they have a 20-year lifespan. When we were walking around the building, we took his light meter because I couldn't find mine at the time and every area that we tested was way below what we should be having for lighting for education. Our gym at the high school was about half what it should be. So in all in all, Rick and I had talked about this a few years ago and ripped through some numbers out there and came up with about a million dollars of what it cost us to do it. We're looking at somewhere around $350,000 to do it all. I just think it's a really good idea and now's the time to do it. Financing was a big thing and looking at different options. We'll be, we'll be basing it into it with no money, so.
And just to add to it, so why a leasing, not a loan, is that we are, as far as what we're able to borrow in a loan, we're pretty much maxed out at that right now, but with the lease, that's a different mechanism. And as you can see, Dave also got bids from Fish and Electric and Bill's Electric. You can see Fish was lower, but that was no installation and they didn't have a lease option for us. Bill's Electric, ironically, Bill's is part of Titan, because Bill was getting installed Titans. And they were at about $575,000. But we did get a 40 or 34.6%.
34.7.
Yeah. It was like, it was like Ronald's, and, and if you do this, and then if you do that. So he was a good salesman, but the reality of Dave, if you would, what was the number? So we added, what, 95,000 square feet?
Our vintage friendship was 74,000 square feet. And in October of 17, I use October only because that was before we were really into doing anything construction wise, where it would have been drawing any power. And then October of 19, so at 74,000 square feet in October that year, we used 59,000 After we added 94,000 square feet in October of 19, we only used 72,000 kilowatts. So that just tells you what the lighting does. You know, I mean, there's some other factors and there are chillers and all that. Well, not chillers in October, but with our boilers and stuff, power, but that's really minimal. So that's all lighting that we saved. What I did is I, I did a comparison of numbers just to see what our savings would have been per square foot, because it's really the only way we could figure it out. And then October of 19, our bill would have been about $2,300 more if we had just fluorescent tubes instead of LED lighting.
One other thing that's, hidden savings is the amount of time it takes to change the ballasts and the fluorescent bulbs and disposing of those bulbs. So there's, there's those elements there too.
We did, two years ago, when we were still replacing them here, we kind of cut back and replaced them because we knew we were getting into this. We were doing about 1,500 bulbs a year and about 100 ballasts. So like $4 a bulb, $2 to buy in, $2 to get rid of, and ballasts are about $22 a piece. It's gonna be a significant savings.
So what, what did you say the disposal was?
Disposal is above the cost of a bulb, it's about $2.
$2 for a tube.
We did, ironically, back in like about 10 years ago, we had over 2,000 in the city around because they're, they're Valentine. We've really transitioned, Dave has done a nice job. Your anniversary on Valentine's Day of what, eight years?
I'm in number 10.
Number 10, a decade, a decade.
Wow.
So, but this is, as you can see up there, as Dave said, you know, this might even be more, but conservatively, we'd be saving $1,100 per month. That's after making the payment. Because it's all based on the money we save.
What's the payment per month?
Um, let's see, the LED savings, monthly green. So the payment, so $2,648 a month for the high school, or Bessie?
Yep.
And then.
3,700 at the high school.
3,700 at the high school.
The high school, the high school, our savings in that five years isn't, isn't real drastic, but that's only because we included even all the outside parking lot.
Yes.
And we have to buy new fixtures for that. It's not a retrofit bulb for them. So by the time we put new fixtures in, that's, that's expensive. But after that five years, then we'll see really significant savings.
New fixtures for the gymnasium also?
No.
For what?
For the gymnasium in the high school?
No, they're just retrofit bulbs.
That's a retrofit?
Yep.
We just installed those lights.
When was that? That was just before me.
About 10 years, 10 years ago.
Whatever.
Yeah, they used to get the warm, warm up time, so whatever. So the majority of the lighting in the high school, that's a four-foot replacement?
Mm-hmm.
Does it go in the same fixture?
It goes in the same fixture, but they don't use the, the tombstones on the ends are just for hanging the bulbs. They don't use the drivers that are powered into it. We'll get rid of, or the ballasts, we'll get rid of the ballasts and put drivers in. So that's just there to hold the bulbs in place. We had done, Pete, we remember back seven years ago, I think it was, we changed all them bulbs and we have not changed bulbs since then there.
That's in your PAC, we were what, about 10?
We were doing about five bulbs a year and they're painting there.
And since it changed all of those?
I think it's for about seven years, six or seven.
So those monthly payments will be for four years?
Five.
Five years?
Yes.
That was a four-year lease?
Five years.
Oh, five for lease, okay. But then, so then the savings really don't start till after the lease payment's done?
Well, actually, savings start now because we're paying them less than what our current bill is.
So when do your savings start?
Right, so let's just say hypothetically, our bill's $5,000 a month, okay? And we save, I'm just, we save $2,000. We're paying them $9,000. I mean, it's a little bit different, but so what we're saving, that's what we're paying for the lease. So we will, we'll see it, we will see a cost savings in our, our electric or in our, our power usage, but from that savings, that money then will go to pay the lease to pay off the installation of bulbs.
So our real savings will be on year six. That's when it will start. Besides, like, all the maintenance.
The leasing is, we're quote.
Stop that.
Install, so if you think of the, the lease as our loan, so what we're saving is we're paying X with, with an interest on a loan, it's just the structure of the lease is different than the structure of a loan. So we'll have like a dollar buyout or something, but from a, from a financial standpoint, you can't borrow any more legally without going to reference.
Our lease payment was actually lower than what the loan was when we figured it out at first.
Yeah.
And the $2 million total savings is over 20 years.
Correct, right. That's basically the life of, life of the bulb.
And remember also, that's not taking into consideration the, the hours, the people hours of switching them and then getting rid of them and then buying new ones too. This is just pure energy savings, without taking other stuff into it.
And $2 a bulb when you're currently.
Do they service them too over the years? Do you have to change the bulbs when these go out?
If, if, if a bulb would go out, there's a, I think there was a six-year warranty, five or six-year warranty on the bulbs, then there's a total replacement. Other than that, it's no different than switching on. It's actually switching on easier than switching out a fluorescent tube.
And the cost of LED keeps going down too for the bulbs and stuffs.
Less heat and no rooms.
Yeah.
There's, there's a lot of factors that are positive in this.
That's a nice.
I'll follow the log itself. It's up to 20 years. No, it's like six years.
Right. They expect the last 20. If they burn out in 10, we can fix those. What we can say is the ones that we're replacing in the PAC, been seven years and we haven't replaced one, won't you? So our current, so if we look at, just to wrap, so currently, we're gonna pay $135, $4 more a month at Bessie Allen, I'm not sure, however, we figure in the savings and then the lease payment. At Horace Van, we're gonna be paying $1,268 less on average per month. We figure the savings in what our lease is.
Except total savings is 20 years.
Correct. And that's us.
Then the side benefit is more uniform and brighter light in the education spaces.
No flickering.
Dave doesn't have gone to land.
Oh, for real? Most of our entries are when people are standing on things and trying to do things above their shoulders. This eliminates almost, you know, besides ceiling tile, most everything above shoulders that people would do.
And they'll put them in.
Yep. Dave, if, if everything goes tonight, we got it scheduled for Friday and Saturday and the gym's done. And then we're gonna change a couple rooms at Bessie Allen and Horace Van, so teachers can see what the light difference is. And then probably all done before that end of the year.
Yeah, if everything would go good tonight, they'll do that. And then they actually started in the high school in, on April break. So they got, just in the education areas, they got about $700 figured in and installing is not counting the gyms.
And the price of installations in this too, that's, that's all.
Well, so it's a, cost of light for us, as far as labor is concerned, you think about all of the tubes that got replaced on an annual basis, just, just from a labor standpoint.
So like, I think Jim, they're replacing that, the whole unit is getting.
No, so there's the housing stays. So like the house, so like this was, like, we just replaced those about 10 years ago. They'll take out the ballast and the light bulb and they'll put the driver in and then the lights will fit into there, just holding them. The driver will go into each one of the LEDs, they'll wire that driver to the lectures, but they'll use the housing that's currently there. So there's no, the only new housing is outside because those are a different one. But all the housings, all the fixtures, if you will, stay the same. They just go in, take out the ballast, take out the tubes, put in the driver, put in the new tubes.
And the gym will be twice as bright?
In the areas that need it. Like the gyms, we're going to a higher, a higher cable to get more brightness. See fluorescent tubes, they wear out after time, you know, in four years, you're probably only at about 75 or less percent of bulb. Technically, we should be changing them bulbs 100% every four years, five years max. We just do it when they're burned out.
So who are we seeing this from?
Yeah, see, that's, you know, but that's, I mean, so we, there's a difference. Sorry, that I should have said something. There's a difference, LED works. That's my, that was my shoulder. Oh, hey, now it's a don't break, right? I, I think that this, to me, is a, is a great opportunity to thank you, Dave, for finding this. This is something that we're not going outside of revenue caps for energy efficiency that other districts might have done. We're doing this with thinner means of what we've got. And what I, what I really think is gonna be an upside that we're never gonna know is of the injuries we won't have and amount of fixing and man hours and people hours that we'll have focused on lights, or they could do something else.
So is the lease failed or is it, we're, that through that?
Through whatever Titan is giving us, so it's through whatever leasing company Titan has.
Well, I think it's right, thinking it was one of the breakout sessions I went to in the conference was about just exactly doing this, just like short, high efficiency on the lights.
And if you want, I'll pass this around to this, ask a little bit more information about specific students.
Any other questions? We're ready for board action. What's the board's pleasure?
Make a motion.
I'll second. I hear a motion, second, to accept the LED contract lease as presented from Bill's Electric.
Titan. Titan LED.
Titan LED. And for the questions? Not a roll call, please.
Stephacker, yes.
Yes.
So that's the yes hack.
Yes.
And with that, let there be more light.
You got it.
Sorry.
That was good.
Couldn't resist that one.
That was good. I was thinking I should turn off. All right, that's, then we got called.